I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is officially 6:05. This is a special school committee meeting of the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee. Today's Thursday, February 25th, 2021. We are holding this meeting via Google Meet. This meeting is being held via Google Meet in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. The link to view the school committee meeting will be available on BNCTV through Facebook, and it's also being streamed live at this time. Before we officially begin this meeting, I'd like to start off by saying just a few words, please. To my fellow members of the school committee, it is with mixed emotions that I sit here this evening and provide the following statement to you. Prior to becoming a school committee member, I sat as a parent through many school committee meetings in an attempt to become informed and made aware of what was occurring within the district and the impact to my child's education. During that time, I was witness to changes in administration, extreme financial deficit, and irresponsibility, and dysfunction amongst a committee that was tasked with the tremendous responsibility for ensuring the education of our community's children. Our teachers and our children were compromised as a result. It was then that I made the decision that when a vacancy presented itself, I would initiate the process for running for a seat on the school committee. It has been two years and four months since becoming an elected member of this school committee. There are many things that have changed and many that continue to remain the same. Someone's trying to get in. The district obtained a sense of financial stability and direction with the budget. The school lunch deficit was addressed and is being managed with competence and organization. Yet our educational programs, staff, and student enrollment remain in a compromised state. This compromised state is a result of the actions of certain members within this school committee. I have been witness to these specific members replying to parent correspondence and referencing these parents as a name. I have witnessed these same members lie in an effort for personal gain for themselves and the towns in which they represent, and have witnessed the use of personal emails as a means for deceit and control. These examples are just a few of the many. The lack of professionalism, mutual respect, and refusal to conform to standards set forth by governing bodies to direct effective functioning are the reasons to which our students and staff remain compromised. As an individual whose life's work has been to improve the lives of children and their families, I can no longer sit back, remain quiet, and be a member of a committee that in itself is nothing short of a disaster. I can no longer be part of a committee whose mission is lost and continues to be sacrificed by individuals whose personal agendas are prioritized over the needs and education of our district's children. I urge the students, parents, and citizens of this community to unite, take action, and work with local and state representatives to create recourse process. In an effort to end this mayhem, it is only then that this committee will be able to regain its integrity, trust, and function as it is intended to do. I would like to thank the teachers and staff for their continued dedication to the district's children, parents and guardians for your continued communication and support, and hope that moving forward, that members of this committee will take a moment of self-reflection and ask themselves, what is their motivation for being a member of this committee? And are you working towards the mission to improve and strengthen the education of each and every child within this district? I respectfully resign from the Pioneer Valley Regional School District School Committee effective today, February 25th, 2021. Thank you.
Russell, does Alan, the vice chair, now chair this meeting?
Yes, he does.
Okay.
I object.
But I think... I think that...
I object.
Who's talking?
Jim. Jim objects to you.
So noted. I'm going to defer to you, John, and the attorney for a minute because I did not expect this. John, can you go through and do a quick roll call vote because we should start with that for a record?
You want... Who's in attendance?
Correct. Just do a roll call vote, please.
Okay, I'll start with you, Alan.
Yes.
David Young?
David Young here.
Jeannie Milton?
Jeannie Milton present.
Jim Bell?
I'm here.
Julie Burke?
Julie Burke present.
Karen O'Neal?
Karen O'Neal present.
Mike Townsley?
Present.
Nathan Swartz? Okay, I saw Nathan on, but it looks like he just disconnected. Oh, Nathan's back. Nathan?
Nathan, they're doing a roll call vote. Okay, he said here.
Just to see if you're here, Nathan. Yeah, I see you're mouthing here. Rena Dastis?
Rena Dastis present.
Robin Knight?
Present.
I think that's it.
All right. Thanks, John.
I'm here. Jonathan.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle Giarusa. Sorry, Michelle. I apologize.
Okay.
All right, so you have the phone number. All right, so since I do not know the nature of the executive session, I'm going to ask the attorney who is present to give us a review of why we had entered... Have we entered into executive session? We have not, have we?
No.
Yeah, I can tell you. So there's two open meeting law complaints pending that the committee needs to review.
I'm sorry, Russell, don't we have to go into executive session first?
No, the chair is asking why the executive session is posted, so...
Okay.
Normally I wouldn't, but there's been kind of a back and forth through email about it, so I want to explain. So normally, and in fact, virtually every time I've ever seen an open meeting law complaint, it's held in executive session, and I think that's the same with all the attorneys in my office. We have had questioned over the years, and the AG's never ruled against an employer for doing it in executive session. However, there is no restriction about doing it in open session if that's the will of the committee to do so. So unless the AG's office has recently changed their opinion on that topic, they have considered over the years, at least from cases my father said in the last few years, that an open meeting law complaint would be considered under the litigation exception because it's not only, you know, potential litigation, it's an actual filing against the school system. The nature of these particular open meeting law complaints aren't... You know, they're something that if you decide you want to hear it in open session, you can vote to hear it in open session. If as a committee you believe it should be in executive session, you could do that as well. You know, is it possible that the AG's office will say it's not allowed? I mean, that's always possible, but we've, you know... I mean, literally, I can't remember a time when it was heard in open session, so if that's the case, it'd be a surprise to most school systems in Massachusetts.
All right, so... Yeah, thank you. That helps me understand a little bit. So what's the will of the committee? Does someone want to make a motion to go into executive session? I don't have an opinion either way, so I certainly will yield to the wish of the committee on how you want to handle this. I see David's hand up, and I see Karen's hand up, and I see Mike's hand up. So let's start with David, Karen, then Mike.
We have a perceived problem of openness and transparency and failure to communicate. Our budget hearing, which by design, not by defect, has to do with our budget, which requires a two-thirds vote of the entire committee, is held in such a way that it wasn't accessible. We should have our discussion to... I mean, unless there is something really bad that could happen, we should have a discussion in public, and I will file an open meeting complaint. I'm going to vote against going into executive session. We need to be forthright about this. I don't think we intended to do a bad thing, but it's a bad thing to go hide... You know, when something needs light, you don't give it shade.
All right, Karen?
Okay, I disagree with David, given that this hasn't been undertaken by a school committee in the past. But we can, after we come out of executive session, we can talk about what we came to as a decision and why we did it. We don't have to have the whole discussion in public.
Okay. And then Mike, I think you were next, and then I saw Julie. Julie, you had your hand up as well, correct? So Mike, you're next. Mike?
I agree with Karen and what Russell said, that the school committees in the state have been doing it this way. We should do it this way unless Attorney General's office tells us otherwise for the future. Thank you.
Okay, Julie?
I agree with Karen and Mike, and I move that we move into executive session to discuss the OML complaints.
I'll second that.
Okay, so when you're doing your executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategies with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body, and the chair so declares, will return to open session. Russell, I'm assuming that language came from you, so I'm going to defer to you for a minute and see whether or not that is appropriate.
It is appropriate, but as that language says, you as the chair would have to declare that that's... That it would have a detrimental effect. So it's really a committee vote and your discretion as chair.
Unfortunately, yeah. Unfortunately, without a little more background, I don't... It's difficult for me to take that stance. Julie has made a motion, however, so...
Alan, can I say something?
Hold one second. And Mike, you seconded her motion, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we were to go into executive session, I want to be clear that I believe that Karen's suggestion for when we come out, that, you know, we disclose what was talked about and why we came to that decision, and I will then have a better idea, I think, about how to proceed in the future. So that we have a motion and a second. David, you may make a comment, and then I'll take a vote.
I would like to know if there will be a recording of the executive session. Because if there's not a recording that is subsequently released, I will make an open meeting complaint, and we will be back hearing it in executive session or not, but I will make another open meeting complaint about this.
Okay, understood. Russell, please weigh in.
Unless you can really fathom something that there's really good reason that we have something to hide from the public, I think we should have this discussion in the open.
Well, since I don't know that, since I don't know that, if a vote is to go into, we shall. Russell, please comment on that.
Russell has said this is the normal thing for a school committee. I've never heard of an open meeting. School committee anywhere being in closed session. However, he has not said that we should be doing this. He's saying that it's the typical thing to do.
If David is just allowed to completely overrun the meeting, what you're wasting all of our time.
Right, I did recognize. Russell, would you comment on that, and then I'm going to call for a vote.
Yeah, in my opinion, you can't go into executive session if the chair doesn't declare that it's necessary in this particular section of the law. So, and Alan, I understand what you're saying because I don't think you haven't seen the complaints. Is that right?
That's correct. I don't... I haven't been in the loop, so I don't know. I can't make a determination on that. Is it essential that this happens this evening? We had 14 days, correct?
Yeah, we had 14 days. That's what I'm thinking, too, is that I think you as chair at this point would need to see the complaints and then make a determination about whether you can declare that you should go in executive session. Because like I said, you don't have to, but you can't go in unless the chair declares and there's a vote.
And I can't declare that until I review the complaint, so... I don't know. We do have a motion, so I don't know how to proceed on that because we have a motion and a second.
Well, I think there's two options before you that I see. One is, in my opinion, you need to vote against the motion because we don't have... The chair has to declare, and Alan can't do that because he hasn't seen the complaints yet. The other option is you could vote against this motion and then vote to just hear him in open session. You know, you could do that, or you need to do it on another day. We could do it early next week, like Tuesday night or something.
Okay, so did I understand you to say that I could declare that the motion... I'm going to use my words, is out of order since I can't make a ruling on whether or not I feel that we can go into executive session for this? Or shall I proceed with the motion?
I would proceed with the motion, but in my opinion, the committee needs to vote against the motion based on the inability of the chair to currently say that it's necessary.
Okay, I'm going to call for the motion then. Julie had a motion, Mike had a second. So I will... Let's see, I guess go through... Nathan, you vote yes or no?
I vote no.
And Michelle?
I vote no.
What am I voting to do?
Are you here?
I'm here.
You're voting to go into executive session or not go into executive session?
And Russell, you're suggesting that we say no because?
Because part of the law requires that the chair declare that it's necessary, and right now the chair hasn't seen the open meeting law complaint, so he can't or he doesn't want to vote that it's not yet or potentially at all.
Point of order. Point of order.
Right.
Point of order.
Yes, Mike.
I believe you have read the complaint because you had it in your personal email.
Absolutely, yes.
You've got it in your personal email, Alan. You've read this document, so you have seen it.
I have not. I have not read this document.
I vote yes.
Excuse me, Russell, did you say we have two complaints?
Yes, two complaints.
All right, so if there are two complaints, we've only seen... I've only seen one. Right. We all got that one.
Okay, Mike? Jeannie?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute. I'm voting no to go into executive session.
Karen? Renee? Rena? Mina?
Rena, yeah, I'm going to abstain as well.
Renee doesn't say no.
David?
She doesn't even tell.
Yeah, David? Robin?
I'm going to abstain due to utter confusion of this committee.
Did I... And I will... I will vote no for the reasons stated before. John, can you help me with the tally? I think I have one, two... I didn't make a list of everyone so I could just check off in the columns. Four abstentions. Do you have that, John?
Honestly, I didn't track it. I thought you were tracking it.
Yeah, I'm trying to do that. So I believe I have four. Let me just total this up. I have four abstentions. I have Michelle no, Mina one, two, three, four, five... Five no's, I believe. Let's see if this is going to add up. And I have one, two, three... I only have three yeses? That can't be. Is that... That's 12. So I had three yeses, four abstentions, and five no's. That is 12.
We only have 11 members here.
Oh, right, right. So, Karen, I wrote abstain next to Karen because she is not here, so... So there's three abstains.
Ellen, this is Karen, and I am here, and I did abstain.
Oh, right. So Jonathan, can you verify that?
I did not track the votes. I thought you were tracking the votes as you were reading off the names.
All right, so tell me if this is correct. I have Jim as a yes. I have Mike as a yes. I have Julie as a yes. Those are the only yeses I recorded. Did anyone else vote yes? As the no, I have Michelle, myself, Nathan.
David.
I believe David, yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And then there were three abstentions. I believe that was Robin, Rena, and Karen. So...
And Julie.
And Julie abstained.
No, I voted yes.
Oh, okay.
No, she voted yes. She voted yes. So let's see, there was 11 on the committee. This would have helped to know this. One, two, three, four, five. So five voted no, three voted yes, and we had the abstention, so the motion does not Which, since there's two items, and I'm seeing that... Had anyone seen both items?
No.
No? Okay, so we'll have to schedule another meeting for that. And I'm not going to do anything in open session because I haven't reviewed them. Okay, the next item is citizens' concerns. Who is going to... I don't have any access to recognizing anyone. Is there...
Alan, I don't think we had it. We had one request, but she sends email and said she was not able to attend tonight, so I don't believe there are any citizens' concerns.
Okay. And then, is there... In my agenda, there seem to be two fours. One said business and one said discussion and vote on sixth grade reconfiguration. Was there something there for business?
I think they both... I think business, discussion and vote was a division under business.
Oh, okay, thank you. So under business, it was discussion and vote on the sixth grade configuration. All right, so let's... John, would you like to begin the conversation or the discussion?
Sure. So I sent a letter out to the school committee this past Monday regarding the sixth grade move and the budget. Given where we are in regards to the sixth grade moving to Pioneer this fall and the failure of the FY22 budget, which includes costs for the sixth grade move, I think it makes sense to do this transition in two phases. But before we can do that, a vote to reconsider bringing the sixth grade up this fall would have to be taken, and my recommendation would be to delay the move until the following fall of 2022. So Phase 1 would be a vote on the budget without the sixth grade move, which I'm hoping we can schedule that budget meeting possibly next week, but contain expenses to offer more opportunities for our seventh and eighth grade students in the fall. Phase 2 would actually be the implementation of the sixth grade transition plan. The district administrators and I have repeatedly stated at forums and meetings that if this move were to happen, it needed to be decided and voted on early enough for everyone to prepare and plan, and of course, be funded. The actual vote was taken in December. We're almost into March. At this point, I believe we can focus on improving the middle school opportunities. However, there simply is not enough time for a more inclusive transition process to occur in a way that is in the best interest of students, staff, families, and our community. I spoke into our financial overseer regarding this plan. I put forth, and he supports it. He's also reached out to the commissioner's office and asked him not to act on the sixth grade move until the school committee can come together and pass a budget that supports our district's educational plan. I urge you not to rush this process, to work together with all interested stakeholders to ensure the sixth grade transition, middle school upgrades, and elementary and secondary programs and services are successful for all our students. And just to give you a little more background, just for a couple minutes, when the vote was taken on December 10th, the original vote, to move sixth grade up this fall, since then, starting on December 16th until the beginning of February, our administration team met nine times. Those meetings ranged from three to five hours long. Two of them were full eight-hour days. Our discussions involved outlining the transition process of how many staff were needed, who is retiring, who... You know, special ed services, what special ed services were needed, the IAs needed, discussions about facilities, the curriculum pieces, stakeholders, staff, student, parents that would make up our team to plan the transition, cost per pupil for curriculum, which curriculum moves up and what new items are needed, furniture needed, student supplies, busing, transition ceremonies, extracurriculum events, technology for the Chromebooks, health needs for incoming students, some increased band and music and counseling. So we are treating the process very similar to that of the summer process for the reopening plan. We were making subcategories and filling them in with ideas and questions. Wanted to then look at scheduling these meetings with stakeholders as we did in the summer. In the summer, we had two teams, an elementary and a middle. We had two teams, an elementary and a middle and high school. The teams met one to two times a week to review the subcategories and discuss the process. We wanted to be cautious of asking more of our staff during the pandemic and wanted to see if we could make these meetings stipit in to support the staff and their time. The only time to have such meetings would be after school hours due to the amount of people needed. Due to the lack of substitutes in our area, meetings during the school day would not be possible. We firmly believe that teachers should be teaching our students during the school day, and that's in the best use of their time and the best interest for our students. The reasons I feel that we cannot keep going in this process at this point, and it's best to delay the move to sixth grade to the following fall, is we don't have a budget. The budget will not be possible. The budget will not be passed in enough time for us to plan for the move in 20, the fall of 2021, 22 school year, as we have around 14 weeks left of school. Now, in these 14 weeks, they include MCAS testing, graduation, moving up ceremonies, award nights, sports banquet, parent-teacher conferences, report cards and progress notes, all teacher evaluations must be completed. And all of these are major requirements in addition to all daily responsibilities during the pandemic. We are three months after the original vote and have no definitive answer or timeline of when the budget will be approved. This process could continue for a few more months. We only have 14 weeks left of the school year. So how can we include stakeholders in this process? We do not know if we can buy the items or the staffing needed. Meetings would be held for several hours, and that time could possibly be wasted. And for what? We could be spending time finishing the sixth grade reconfiguration group process so that we have a full and robust plan for the 2022, 23 school year. This plan and process could be done in that 37 to 40-week period next school year. Plus, we'd have two summer planning sessions this summer and the following, and possibly 14 additional weeks for the remainder of this school year. Commissioner's office sent an email requesting more information be provided. I think everybody's received that at this point, or has at least seen it. The commission will not approve the sixth grade move without a budget in place. That's been made very clear by the overseer. If the transition takes place, however, in the 22, 23 school year, we can then use the DESI and commissioner's request for additional information as a template to make sure we are meeting all state requested guidelines for this process. I just wanted to give everybody a little bit of background on that, which led to my letter. So thank you. Thank you, Alan, and committee.
All right. I just wanna comment that I, I'm sure writing that letter was probably very difficult, given the, given the circumstances. So I commend you for that. And the associate commissioners' letter really does, as you just commented, provide, we know now what documentation that they would be looking for. And I think that it's important because in the end, we're looking for, you know, this move to happen. And the, and the success of this is, is, you know, involving everyone. So I wanna ask Russell, if I may. I've always understood that, and I don't know if we've officially adopted Robert rules or not. Maybe Karen, as the policy guru here, might, might be able to speak to that. But I noticed that on the agenda, it says vote. I, I wanna be clear. Are we voting to reconsider? Are we voting to rescind?
So you would.
Since it's on the agenda generally as a vote, I'm not clear on what, what your recommendation is that you would, how would you like a motion to be worded?
So you would take two votes. One, the first vote would be a motion to reconsider. If you get a positive vote on that motion, then you have a second motion, which is the motion on the sixth grade. I guess Jonathan, you were saying that sixth grade would occur next year.
Correct. Sixth grade would, would begin to follow 2022.
So it's a two-step process. And the motion reconsider has to be, the motion itself has to be made by somebody that voted in the majority on the underlying motion. So somebody that voted for the sixth grade move the first time would have to be the one to make the motion to reconsider. Then there'd be a second and a vote.
And then we would vote on that motion to reconsider. And if that passes, then we would move to a motion to rescind the original vote. Is that correct?
Nope. You don't need to vote to rescind. You just need to vote to reconsider. If, if the vote to reconsider fails, then the original motion stands. If the vote to reconsider passes, the original motion still stands until you vote anew on, you know, on the new motion to delay for a year, if you do.
Okay, okay. Um, I think that's clear to me. I see Julie's hand up. And I see Robin. Julie, you're on.
Russell, I just wanted to clarify because we had an MAS C training last week, and the trainer Glenn Pucher, I believe was his name, said that you don't move to reconsider unless it's within the same meeting. So you, you can move to reconsider a vote as long as it was taken in the, earlier in that same meeting? And you move to, you vote to rescind if it's, if there's been space between meetings?
We've never done it that way before. So that's not what I've ever seen occur. It's always been a motion to reconsider. But the reality is, it's not, Robert's Rules of Order is not a law. It's just a procedural guide that most school committees follow. But what I've always, what I've always seen and what our office has always done is that you do a motion to reconsider. Because a motion to, a motion to rescind is your, I mean, essentially, if you rescind it, you've, a motion to reconsider means you're all willing to talk about it again. And that's, and that's, would be the appropriate motion for this because you have a brand-new proposal essentially on the table. So it's not just the sixth grade won't move at all. It's the sixth grade will move the following year. So we've always used motions to reconsider in this type of case, not a motion to rescind.
Right.
But like I said, not like you're violating the law one way or the other. You're just following Robert's Rules of Order, which is a procedural guide.
Right. And I think Julie, you're, you're spot on in terms of what we heard. Reconsider happens at the same meeting and a rescind happens at another meeting. I don't particularly care at this point because as long as we all know what we're doing, then, you know, that's the important thing. I would have to ask you, though, in the motion to reconsider, Russell, are we looking for just a simple majority on both those motions?
Yes, it would be a majority vote for motion reconsider. I can actually, I don't usually use motion for rescind, so I can look and see quickly what that would be.
Well, the reason I ask that is because it requires a two-thirds vote. And but it all depends on whether or not we are hard and fast to Robert's rules, or we sort of use them as a guideline. I'm sorry, Robin, you did have your hand up. Robin?
Yes. So I am confused. So I read over my emails today. I read over a letter that I'm not sure I was supposed to see or not see. It was unclear to me how it ended up in my email, the one from Mr. Sullivan. So I'm confused about that. I'm confused that when we go to vote, it seems from that letter that we haven't met none of the requirements to even consider the vote. I mean, where does that letter fit in, Jonathan, with what your letter was? And how does that affect the vote? Because is, if we are just reconsidering, does that mean that we're definitely gonna move them the following year? Or does that mean that the whole thing is off the table? I don't understand that letter. I don't understand half of the emails I got today, which, I wanna say one more thing before we go any further. And I'm gonna try to read this quickly, and we don't have to say it. But I also wanna discuss and let people know that our continuing behavior as a committee and actions of some members of this committee make me feel like there are threats and intimidations at these meetings. And they continue to undermine this entire committee's work. And I'm really saddened that these actions contributed to our chairman's resignation. And I'm not all that crazy, Alan, to be honest, that I would like to consider revoting for a new chairman also at some point. And at that, I will be quiet.
Yeah, thank you, Robin. Fair enough. I'll, I'll address that at another meeting and see how, how to proceed on that. I get it. So how it fits in in terms of, there were two separate things going on. There was a, there was a, a request to do a reconfiguration to the commissioner. And, and that was the response that came back from the associate commissioner. So he was responding to what, what he would like to see as documentation for that move. So that's what that letter was about. And that's the letter that Jonathan was referring.
How did that end up in my email? And why is there, is it going to newspapers? Can Jonathan explain this to me, please? I'd like Jonathan to answer.
Okay. I, I don't know how it got into your email. I, I did not send that letter, and I didn't send it to the recorder either. So I'm not, not sure. You know, I can't speak on that any further. I can just say that the letter that they sent back, just to get a little background, much like we did during the closure of the two elementary schools, we provide them with the official vote on letterhead that takes place, and then documentation that we have and a narrative as to what's happened up to that point. And then they review that, and then they will ask for further information, further clarification, further things they might be looking for. So that's what happened in this case. I'd sent them what we had, where we were in the process, everything we had done. And this was a, a response back to that. Before we did receive this letter, though, I had spoken to the overseer who had talked to the commissioner's office and told them actually to put a hold on making a decision. That's what I stated in my letter. But this letter came out after he did that. And I think it was so, you know, they could kind of show that they responded, even though they were, you know, told by the, the financial overseer to hold off. But this would serve as a template moving forward. So I, I think as long as the committee votes in favor of the move, and at this case, for the fall of 22, we follow, you know, what they've laid out in this document. And we meet these expectations that they, they won't have a problem moving the sixth grade at that point. So I think we can use what they're looking for and the information that they're looking for as a template to move forward and still, you know, have sixth grade move, but in the fall of 2022. Does that answer your question, Robin?
Um, it does. So this, this letter came out to you after you had already sent the other letter to us about rescinding your support of the sixth grade move?
Yes.
Is that true?
Yes. I believe, I believe so. It was right around the same, it might have been the same day, right around the same time. But basically, I composed my letter. And then this was done after the fact, even the overseer was surprised that we received this. But he responded back to DESI, basically saying that we were gonna be talking and reconsidering the vote for FY22, just to update him and that this timeline of March 12th that they asked for, you know, he was asking that, that we not be held to that timeline. So we would have more time to gather information. If the vote were to happen in favor of moving the sixth grade to the fall of 2022, it would give us plenty of time to, you know, do, do what's being requested and gather the information and, and proceed through the process in a way that would satisfy the Department of Ed and allow us to be able to move the sixth grade.
I do agree that at this point in time, we are running out of time because the way this committee works. And that is sad. Okay, I'm done.
Yeah, Robin, so your hand is still up if you wanna put it down. But I, I certainly will address the fact that I did not send it to the recorder, but I did receive the letter as the vice chair. And I, I had it for a couple of days. And then when I reviewed the agenda, I saw that as a topic. So I took it upon myself to make sure that the committee members had it so that if that was going to be linked to any discussion and vote which was on the agenda, people should be aware of it. I don't have any regrets sending it out, other than I wish that I had an opportunity to converse, as I have in previous meetings with the chair prior to things being on the agenda. So we have a lot of hands right now. Russell, when do, Russell, when do you have to leave? Because we have a procedural thing here. And I want to, and I, I have a, I usually run things pretty quickly and, and wanna be, you know, conclude the meeting with some kind of a vote to see what we're doing. So I guess I'll just go right across the top. I saw, go ahead.
Yeah, let me, yeah. So I was looking up motion to rescind. So that would be by majority vote, if all the members who voted in favor of the motion to be rescinded or amended are present or received adequate notice. Otherwise, two-thirds vote is required for a motion to rescind. When I looked at the motion to reconsider, that one is normally done in the same meeting or the next session. And that's a majority vote. So those are the two options.
All right. So we'll stay with how you laid it out before with a reconsideration vote. Do we want to have, does someone wanna make the motion and then we'll continue discussing? I'm gonna go across the top of the screen. I'll start with Karen. You're on mute, I think. Karen?
Thank you very much, Alan. I disagree with your not contacting the chair before sending out that letter to us. It was not addressed to any of them. Your accompanying email, you seem to call out the chair. And subsequent events seem to suggest that you have issues. You had issues, the two of you. And that didn't make it better. So and I would also like to know who on the committee did send it to the recorder. If you are present, please identify yourself.
I've had my hand up to try and, and take credit for that. I do not go to, to our executive sessions. And even though I vehemently disagree with taking a open meeting law question into a locked room, I wouldn't go in there to, and break the seal. But I will share, I, I was the one. I shared Jonathan's letter. I shared Assistant Commissioner Sullivan's letter. I talked to the press. And they're, they're public documents. And we have a problem here with openness and throwing shade on everything is not helping. I didn't get that thing till 6 o'clock last night, and I shared it with the press.
I, I need to.
I'll proudly do it again. Don't bother speaking against it to me.
No, but Karen, I wanna be respectful. Go ahead, Karen.
Yes.
Your hand was still up.
I know that David has never in my memory attended an executive session. And I'm wondering if that disqualifies him from being a member of a school committee body that has to do those things from time to time. And I just do not appreciate the whole approach you've taken to trying to, to publicize this and have the whole thing happen in the media. We have a committee to make decisions. We record all our meetings. Our meetings are streamed. We are doing our duty. And we should not go behind each other's backs to stir things up, especially if it's to promote a point of view that one of us holds. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Jim, you have your hand up. I can't see you, but I, I see a hand.
You can hear me now?
Yes, I can. Yeah, go ahead.
I agree with Robin. Robin, thank you for being on the committee and bringing a little bit of sanity. I agree. We need a chairperson who's less divisive. I, it's a mess that what happened with Kristen. I don't know exactly what happened. But we need, we, we definitely need a chairperson who's less divisive and doesn't bring, hasn't brought an agenda that isn't quite so hidden along with him.
All right. You can imply that, not accurate, but I saw, let's see. So you're, let me go to Julie. Your hand was up, and then Robin, and then I'm gonna entertain a motion. Julie, you're on.
So when you speak about, when a member speaks about something that needs light shone on it, we need to, to seriously shine a giant spotlight on the school committee member who is toxic, who continually is rude, disrespectful, and it's embarrassing to be on this school committee with him. He undermines the committee at every turn. He sends our information to the recorder or news outlets behind our backs. He doesn't respect our process whatsoever. We had the opportunity to, we made a vote on the sixth grade move. He refers to himself as a snake in the grass and holding the budget hostage is what he's going to do in order to get his way, which he has delayed the process of the sixth grade move so long that now the administration doesn't have time to put it together. So we essentially are backed into a corner by him. There needs to be a way to remove him from the committee. There needs to be accountability for this behavior. I don't think a single one of us on this committee would agree that how he conducts himself is professional with integrity and is for the best of the school district and the students. And I'm disgusted.
Okay, I'm gonna, I understand. That's probably a topic that's, it's not germane to what we're focusing on, which is a vote to reconsider. So I'm going to recognize Mike and then I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a vote. Mike?
A vote on what?
So.
I'm going to entertain a motion for, to reconsider. But I want, I want to recognize Mike. He had his hand up.
So just so everybody's aware, the school committee has done a lot of work over the last two, two years and four months with Kristen and the rest of us on it that were on it and we took over with the deficit. Now, some people were on the committee when the deficit happened. I'm not going to blame anybody. It happened. But we've taken care of most of that problem. I'm looking forward to providing education for the students. And that was one of the reasons I had actually sent, all the way back to when Lydon was in Lorimer being entertained to be closed, that was put on the table. Now, things happen. Parents don't get involved. I know they're busy. And the same with the closing of schools. The school committee does a lot of work. I mean, just this week alone, I've probably got 20 hours in. Late nights, up early, and then to go to budget subcommittee meetings and have a person miss three out of the five meetings and show up at the last two and voice that he's going to be a snake in the grass. I mean, I respected what he said. I did say that because everybody has their voice. But to come in at the end of all the work that had been being put into putting together a budget based on the sixth grade vote. If the sixth grade vote hadn't passed, I wouldn't have reconsidered it because I hadn't in the past. But the committee voted seven to five to do it. We were given a task to put a budget together with the administration and that's what we did. Nothing was hid. Anybody could have come to the meetings. During the start of the meetings, I had two devices going, so I made sure people could get in. So it's disappointing, you know? You try to do the best for the kids. Even, even in a time when COVID's hitting you, you, what I see is providing individual teachers for individual subjects to boost education at a time when it's needed most. Now, if the committee wants to reconsider and move it off, I'm only one vote. And I've been saying that right from the get go. We're all one vote. How it turns out, I respect the committee's decision. And I always support the committee's decision because the time that we waste with grandstanding and arguing the points wastes time on improving education. So I just, I just think we can work better and move forward. And when the committee votes, we need to stand by that and we need to own it as a whole. Thank you.
All right. I said that after Mike, you had the floor last, that I was going to entertain a motion to reconsider the, the vote. And this is, I understand, Russell, this is a vote to reconsider the, the motion, the original motion that was made to move the sixth grade class. Is that correct?
Yeah, but yes. Was that taken at your last meeting, though?
No, no, it was a couple of meetings ago.
So then based on what I was looking at, it sounds like you should do a motion to rescind.
Yeah, I would agree. It would be a motion to rescind. The.
That vote was in December, Russell.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was your last meeting. So if it's not, it would be a motion to rescind.
So I need someone who voted in the affirmative to make that motion. And, and I want to be clear, we're, at this point, I think we're, well, we listened to what Jonathan had to say. It sounds like he has a very thoughtful approach to this. It is what it is right now. So his recommendation is, is, if I understood this, was to postpone that until the fall of 2022. Mike, you had your hand up to make a motion?
I think Jim had his up first.
Oh, I didn't see that. Thank you, Jim. Jim? Jim, I think you're on mute, Jim. I don't hear you.
I'll make the motion. So moved.
Okay, so that was a motion to reconsider and you did vote in the affirmative.
I believe that's a motion to rescind, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a motion, yes, a motion to rescind. And who, and Michelle, you seconded?
I did.
Okay, and we have more discussion on that? Jonathan, you gave a good review. Robin?
I just have one question. The vote to rescind, is that rescinding it for just this year or is it rescinding it all together? I'm not clear about that.
It's a great question. It's a great question. Your vote is just to rescind the original motion and vote, which was to move the sixth grade in this coming school year. So that's, that's what you'd be rescinding, that vote. Russell?
Yeah, that's correct. So the first vote would be nullified. And then based on what Jonathan said, if you want to adopt Jonathan's proposal, you would have another vote, which would be to move the sixth grade next year. So you're going to need two votes.
Right, correct. All right, if there's any other discussion, otherwise I'll call for a vote. All right, let's go down. Jim, yes or no?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes, in support of Jonathan's recommendation.
Julie?
Yes.
Nina?
Yes.
Nathan?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So that motion passes. We have a second. Attorney, the attorney advised that we would then move to a second vote. And so that would be a new motion. And just to be clear, that would be on what you're, as a whole, going to be directing the school committee to be doing. Mike, your hand up was up first.
I'd like to make a motion that sixth grade be moved to Pioneer Valley Regional School, Middle School for the fall of FY 22, the fall of 22. And also, and also along with that, I would like to have world language put back into this year's budget for the elementary schools.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Point of order. Mike, Mike, point of order. We're going to have a budget. At our next meeting, we're going to have a budget presentation and probably recommendations from the superintendent as to what he would like to see in, in the, in the budget for the middle school and so forth. So if you combine it with this particular motion, that's, that's, that's not going to really help well because that's a, that's a whole nother issue. Where you're going with this, I like and I certainly would, you know, support doing things that we can do to improve the education. But we're focused on a motion that deals with the sixth grade move. Can I comment a minute, Mike, in terms of, as you're formulating your motion?
How about, how about I ask John Schedule a question instead of interrupting me?
Yes, go ahead.
John, we spoke about this and that, and actually David thought it was a good idea back at one, at the last budget subcommittee meeting. It was the last couple of minutes of our meeting. And even David said, that's a good idea. Because it wasn't, he wanted to keep the original budget number for this year and move sixth grade to next year. That was part of our budget subcommittee meeting and that's why I'm making it part of this motion. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct. I see David nodding his head, yes. I just want to make sure, Mike, you're making the motion for fall of 2022, correct? With the sixth grade?
That's correct. But I believe in providing further education this year for the fall of 2021. And I would like to, the motion is to move sixth grade delay to the 22 fall and add world language to the fall of 2021 to the elementary schools. A full-time position to go between Norfield and Berniston for world language. Thank you.
Mike, do you? All right.
That's the motion.
I don't, okay, we'll see if there's a second. I don't understand the link of that because I think, I think we can do that as a, as part of a budget process. But the.
I'd like to second that.
On that motion?
Yes, this is Karen. Yes, I seconded.
All right, so Karen seconded it. So your motion is to postpone until, delay until the fall of 2022 and to add world language? Okay, we can open that up for discussion. Because that, that seems to be a really different aspect to a motion. So Russell, you have any comments regarding that motion?
The issue is it's not on the, we don't have on the agenda anything related to the budget. We only have the sixth grade move. So.
It is from a recommendation of this budget subcommittee.
It is, but that's not, that's not, this is not a budget question right now. Budget question would be at the next meeting. And we haven't given any notice about doing something with curriculum at this meeting. So I, I personally think that we ought to keep the motion to what it's, what was on the agenda, which is to vote to, in this case, the motion is to rescind. We did that and now we're having a new motion to delay until the fall of 2022. And that's really the scope of what our purpose is for this evening.
I didn't see delay on the jury.
I want to recognize you at, from the, in a budget discussion that you would have at the next meeting. So I'm hearing the attorney concur that that's, wasn't the scope of what's on the agenda. Do you, do you want to reframe your motion, Mike?
I guess if we're only going to vote on sixth grade, then I, the motion is to delay till FY 22. I mean, this, but I just hope that, the reason I bring it up now, now everybody knows it. If they want to go back and watch the recording of the budget subcommittee meeting, so next week when it comes up for budget, that you remember the students and provide better education. And world language is going to be a key factor coming up. It's already, students are coming in that we're going to need to communicate with. And I believe all the young kids need to be able to have some insight on the world language.
Okay, you certainly have no argument from me. I'm all for improving the programs. David?
I would like this to be, I want to support.
David, one, one point. So Mike just made another motion. I'd like a second on that motion.
Could I speak first? Because I want to temper the motion.
All right, we have a second. If you want to offer a friendly amendment, go, go ahead. So Karen seconded the motion. You can offer a friendly amendment or suggestion, David.
I think that we ought to, in our, we should be very careful with the motion because in my view, the December 12th vote was a little unexpected and, and we want to be careful how, you know, how we frame the vote. I want to vote for this. I want to vote for the full amount. I want to vote, but I'd like to incorporate some kind of tacit reference to the deputy commissioner's letter that we're going to engage in a process. And I don't think it should be a foregone conclusion. I think it should be that we engage in a process and that we affirm that we want to move to a middle school model officially, which our district agreement doesn't say, say in it. And that we, and that, and we ought to be recognizing that we're not voting to do it. We're voting to recommend it to the commissioner. The commissioner under the acts could do it to us. They want to work with us. But I would like to see a motion that, that recognizes that there's, some will perceive the, the process up to date is not, not been all it should have been and that, and that we're going to have a real process. It's not a foregone conclusion. But that we're delaying the sixth grade move. I can see the tendency. But section four of Jay Sullivan's letter said, you know, you heard all this testimony that the sixth grade move was bad for education and bad for this. How do you answer it? So that's what I'd like to do. Mike, I, I understand wanting to seize the ring here, but if we could somehow move those thoughts in, I'd be most comfortable. I think it would work best for us.
All right. I'm going to make this comment. I, I have faith in the superintendent and the letter that he wrote and that he already referenced trying to, you know, trying to satisfy the questions that commissioners raised and using that as a template. And so I have faith in the administrative team and they're going to use that as a guideline. So I, I don't see the need to, you know, put that in a motion. We all heard that this evening and we heard the commitment that it's being made. I think in the end of this is so that, so that we get approval from the commissioner to, to realign to a, a middle school model. So I think, Mike, that's the end goal, right, in this motion? Is to then gain approval from, from the commissioner to realign to a six through eight middle school model, correct?
I think Mike left the meeting. I think he just left the meeting.
Okay. All right, I'm going to ask, I think, Jeannie, you want to make a comment and then I'm going to call for a vote so that, so that, John, you'll have, you'll have, you'll know how to work with your administrative team. Jeannie?
Actually, I'm good at this point. I raised my hand initially when Mike was making it a very complicated two-step motion. And my request is to make it one item at a time. So I guess my comment's not needed.
Okay. Any other discussion? I'm going to go down.
Did you repeat the motion?
Oh, did we lose you, Mike? And then you came back?
Sorry about that. The internet dropped out on me.
Oh, okay.
I didn't mean to hear all that anyways.
Mike, Mike, I just wanted, I just wanted to be clear that your motion, the intent of your motion is so that you would be able to, or the superintendent will be able to make a recommendation to the commissioner to approve the Pioneer realignment to a middle school model of six through eight, correct?
So we went from making, making it happen to making a recommendation. You know, this is, this is...
No, no.
This is how it all doesn't happen. We just string it out, string it out, string it out. I mean, you guys, you guys do what you want. Somebody, somebody else can make that motion, but it's not gonna be me.
Okay, so we have your motion on the floor. I'll take a vote. Jim Bell?
What's the motion?
The motion is to move the, have the sixth grade move delayed until the fall of 2022. Is that correct, Mike?
That's correct.
And, and it was seconded by?
Me, Karen. Yes.
Thank you, Karen. All right, Jim Bell?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Karen?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mina?
Reyna, yes.
Reyna, sorry. Nathan?
Yes.
David?
Abstain.
And the chair votes yes. So we have 10 yeses and one abstention. All right, we made it through that as a, as a group. Was there any other, I didn't see any other business that is coming before the, this committee. Karen, you have your hand up before we have a motion adjourned?
No, I would just like to make a short statement for the good of the order. Okay, we need something positive. Okay. At our curriculum and personnel meeting two nights ago, it was a joy to be doing the work of that committee. We had the pleasure of hearing from Ariel LaRoe and many teachers about two important curriculum programs. One at the elementary level, a new English Language Arts program that's been piloted by several teachers this year, and one at Pioneer, the Career and Technical Education Program, and how that is proceeding with a $100,000 grant to make, make some permanent purchases and changes that can advance our Pathways Program. And then we heard from Kevin Burke about the middle school model, the progress that's being made, and the phases that John outlined tonight. And I want to say, this is why I'm a member of the school committee. This is what we should be working on and be united in moving education forward. If you want to learn more about those programs, there were slideshows related to it, and it was televised. Thank you.
That's wonderful. And we, you might want to consider having, Michelle?
Yes, I just want to tell you, I have to leave. So, okay?
Okay.
Bye.
Years ago, the Pioneer School Committee, and Karen, you probably remember this, we, people would come before the committee. Maybe it's, we just hadn't enough, hadn't had enough time, but different aspects of the wonderful things, the miracles that were happening in the classroom every day were presented to the school committee so that the public was aware as well as the committee. It's something to be thinking about to, because unless we get that out there, people won't know the amazing things that are happening inside the schools. Julie, your hand is up? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Karen. Go ahead, Karen.
Well, part of the budget will, is going to be dedicated to publicizing some of our curricular efforts. Just wanted you to know.
Excellent. Julie?
Yeah, and I just wanted to second what Karen said. I was so proud to be part of this school committee when we, when I was a part of that curriculum and personnel meeting the other day. I wished that everybody involved, the 12 of us, could be focused and united on our true mission, which is to make the best possible learning environment for our children. There's exciting work that's being done utilizing the 90 acres of land that we have at Pioneer, the outdoor classroom that's being built, the new elementary school model that provides continuity along the, the learning process through the grades. And exactly like Karen said, you know, that's why I am here. That's, and that's what makes me proud to be a part of this committee, to see that work that's being done. And I, I want to encourage the parents to hang in there and know that, you know, this, this drama that we have been dealing with, this chaotic type of situation, there still is a lot of good that's happening behind the scenes. And if they hang in there with us, I truly believe that Pioneer will be a place, that will be a destination, again, for people to send their children to, and they will be seeking out the opportunity to send their children to. And also, I've had the opportunity to be home this week. I'm speaking from a parental point of view and overhear one of my son's remote learning. And I was truly impressed with several of the classes, how he had a science class, a health class, a math class. And I really enjoyed listening to the teachers teach and doing what they do best. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them as well. I realize that that's an incredibly difficult thing to do, to shift and to have synchronous and asynchronous. But really, what I overheard was truly outstanding, and I just wanted to express my sincere gratitude.
Thank you. Very well said. Mike?
I'd like to thank the members of the Pioneer Valley School Committee for working the last two and a half years to make corrections in our school system. The staff has been exceptionally good at enduring all the tough times that have happened. I hope that the school community and families can come together. I hope the parents get involved with this sixth grade move. It's crucial that they are involved, and hopefully, they step up and join in to say what they want. It's kind of hard for a school committee to do everything. It's hard for things to happen without input. But over the last couple of days, certain things have happened. Individuals have done things. And today, an individual did things that, to me, is unacceptable, and that resulted, I think, in one of our members resigning. With that being said, I'm gonna stand tall and stand with Kristen, and I'm gonna resign at the adjournment of this meeting. Thank you.
All right, are there any, Karen, do you still have your hand up, or is that you forgot to put it down?
I forgot.
Okay, I will take, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Karen moved. Jim, do you second?
Sure.
I have to take a roll call vote. Jim?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
I don't see Mike, if Mike, if you're there. Michelle is gone. Karen?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes, this is really, this is devastating for this committee.
It is.
Julie?
I agree, I agree. It's devastating, and yes.
Reyna, yes.
Nathan, yes.
David? I guess David has left. And chair votes yes.